Okay, we are live. I want to read a declaration by our governor. Prior to the meeting and Governor Greg Abbott on March 13th, 2020 issued a declaration of emergency as a result of the COVID-19 virus outbreak. Subsequently, on March 16th, 2020 pursuant to the authority granted in the declaration, Governor Abbott temporarily suspended the application of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551, in order to prevent telephonic open meetings. This was an effort to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19 virus by avoiding large group meetings while still ensuring continued governmental operations and preserving transparency in a decision-making process. Pursuant to this authority, Tarrant County College District gave notice of its intent to conduct today's Board of Trustees meeting as a telephonic and video conference open meeting. Six trustees will participate in this meeting by video conference. Dr. Patrick, I'll just, let's do the roll call while we're going through this. Ms. Ayala, are you present?
Present.
Dr. Patrick.
Present.
Dr. Evans.
Present.
Dr. Morrison.
Present.
Mr. Greenhill.
Present.
Mr. Barr.
Present.
Okay, then we will call the meeting of the May 14th Board of Trustees meeting of Tarrant County College District to order. And first item of business is public comment, and I believe we have three public comments, and those are going to be read by Carol Brackett. Carol?
Good evening, President Heed, Trustees, Chancellor Giavonini. The first of our three public comments comes from ICE out of Tarrant and reads as follows. "The Supreme Court of the United States is expected to announce their decision on DACA in June of this year. And from what many lobbyists have been predicting, they are expected to announce the decision to rescind the program. DACA, which gave deferred action status to thousands of undocumented individuals and created an opportunity to pursue better lives in this country, is going to be removed and in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, no less. With the removal of DACA, the livelihood of countless individuals, many of them students, faculty, and staff of TCC will be at stake. In fact, in an article published last month from the National Immigration Law Center, the writer explained that for years, the USCIS has been engaged in the unsafe practice of sharing DACA recipient information with ICE. Inevitably, ICE will use the rescinding of DACA to begin targeting DACA recipients and their families for arrest and deportation. The Coalition ICE out of Tarrant demands that the TCC Board of Trustees adopt a sanctuary campus resolution to ensure that undocumented students, staff, and faculty are protected while on campus. Such measures would include not allowing Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, officers onto campus without a warrant, the refusal of campus police to enforce immigration law, not sharing student, faculty, staff immigration status with ICE, not gathering information on immigration or citizenship status, providing confidential legal support to students, faculty, and staff with immigration law questions and issues, reducing the deployment of campus police to protest that seek to include undocumented students and workers to avoid intimidation of undocumented activists. Such measures would not only create the safe educational environment that TCC's undocumented population deserves, it could also very well lead to an increase in enrollment amid pandemic. If the TCC Board of Trustees wishes to create meaningful dialogue with us, please reach out to us via email at JonathanGadian1216@gmail.com. Respectfully, ICE out of Tarrant." The next one is from Cindy Mata. "My name is Cindy Mata, and I'm here today to voice my serious concerns after learning that TCC campus have not ensured student safety by adopting the sanctuary campus proposal. In light of current policies in our community such as the 287-G agreement, we ask Tarrant County College Board of Directors to take initiative and commit to take the necessary steps to guarantee student privacy and safety. The 287-G agreement suffers from poor oversight and lack of transparency. We cannot continue to divert our local resources to a program that creates harm, and it is important more than ever to prioritize community needs and public safety. The impact of this agreement has already created a detrimental impact with long-lasting consequences. It would be irresponsible to continue to allow it to harm our Tarrant County population. The oppression of fear due to current policies is existent in the lives of our current undocumented student population. It is imperative that Tarrant County College stands against the agreement to ensure community safety for all of its students and employees. The agreement has shown an existing increase of racial profiling. Officials use a person's race or national origin as a form of identification to place an ICE hold on an individual. The impact of this action on our community results in fear and a lack of trust between local law enforcement and our community's public safety. The impact of this policy leads to irreversible damage through family separation and the continuous distrust and anxiety felt by our community. In this unprecedented time, spending local resources on federal enforcement, federal immigration enforcement activities such as detaining individuals in local custody, it is important more than ever that the Tarrant County College campus considers the impact of this agreement and commits to enacting a plan for equity and inclusion. I urge you all to take this matter seriously and make the changes that are necessary to ensure that every student feels protected and respected on campus. The 287-G agreement is up for vote by the Tarrant County Commissioners Court during the month of June 2020. ICE out of Tarrant Coalition seeks to ensure community safety. We ask that the TCC Board of Trustees shows leadership and commits to stand up for its employees and students by taking a stance against the renewal of the agreement. We urge you to stand on the right side of history by supporting ICE out of Tarrant in its effort and sign our petition as individual trustees." The third comment comes from the United Fort Worth Immigration Action Team. "In response to the recent proposed ending of DACA by SCOTUS, the Immigration Action Team Subcommittee of the Organization United Fort Worth proposes that the TCCD Board of Trustees adopt a resolution to focus on supporting the lobbying for House Resolutions 6 and 1998, both of which would provide additional support for DACA recipients and other members of the undocumented community. Whereas TCCD Board of Trustees ought to announce in a public statement their support of the continuation of the DACA program, whereas TCCD Board of Trustees ought to announce in a public statement their support of House Resolutions 6 and 1998. House Rule HR 6, American Dream and Promise Act of 2019 will prevent the removal of certain aliens who entered the United States as minors and grant such aliens conditional permanent residence status for 10 years. This bill will provide for procedures to apply for conditional permanent residence for aliens who received DACA and have not been disqualified from DACA. HR 6 protects law-abiding DACA recipients from deportation and allows them to apply for permanent residency. HR 1998 Protect Dreamer Confidentiality Act will prevent the Department of Homeland Security from disclosing information from DACA applicants to Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, or Customs and Border Patrol, Border Protection, CBP, except only in the case to prosecute a felony not related to immigration status. HR 1998 prevents ICE and CBP from targeting DACA recipients for deportation if the program is terminated. Whereas TCCD Board of Trustees ought to lobby on behalf of their DACA recipient population to local Congress representatives and demand that they support House Resolutions 6 and 1998. The SCOTUS decision on DACA is fast approaching, potentially jeopardizing the future of countless TCCD undocumented students, faculty, and staff. If the TCCD Board of Trustees is truly committed to helping its undocumented population sustain and build a prosperous future within the nation, they will agree to support United Fort Worth's Promise the Dream campaign. Individual board members can agree to support, but we encourage the board as a whole to take this stand. If any of the board members wish to continue this conversation, please reach out to us via email at JuanNunez88@gmail.com. Thank you."
Thank you. Before we proceed, during this time of working from home and so forth, we sometimes forget what day it is. And I wanted to correct the date of this meeting. It's May 21st, 2020. Item four, review of proposed consent agenda items for a board meeting on today. I would like to request to remove item 4D from the consent agenda. I have some additional information and...
Mr. Heed, I'm sorry. Point of order, we need to approve the minutes?
Yes. Oh, well, thank you. I was skipped right over that. Review of board business items. Thank you, Dr. Morrison.
You're welcome.
We have, we have two minutes to approve. One is the April 9th, 2020 work session meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Motion approved by Dr. Morrison. I didn't hear the second.
Second, Diane.
Dr. Patrick. Item B, the April 16th Board of Trustees meeting minutes.
Move approval.
Second. Michael Evans.
Move approval by Dr. Morrison and a second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye on both?
Aye.
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 Item four, the consent agenda items. I would like to remove item 4D for a little further discussion by our board. And any, any member of the, of the board can do that, and then we'll have discussion right after the consent agenda review. So review of the four items that we have. 4A is consideration approval of deductive change auto-travino group for air handling units and air volume system replacements, Phase 2 project at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley North Coast Center of Excellence in the amount of $43,549.17. Item B is consideration approval of contract amendment for the sale of additional acreage, .346 acres to Bassem Al-Nemri and Raba K. Nemri at the northeast corner of West Harwood Drive and Precinct Line Road in the amount of $391,650 paid to the college. Item C is consideration approval of an inter-local agreement for one year with a one-year option to renew with the City of Arlington for access to the demand rideshare program by southeast campus students. No financial commitment on our part. Next one would be E, consideration approval of amendments to Tasby Local Policy EGAA grading and credit by examination.
Move approval.
Move approval by Dr. Morrison.
Second.
By Michael. By Dr. Patrick. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five will reconsider the item reboot from the consent agenda, which is the consideration and approval of a revised mineral investment policy section of the TCC Investment Policy Strategy. We had a presentation at our work session. What was proposed is a 60% fixed income, 40% equity ratio of our investments. We had a foundation meeting last night, and I wanted to bring, bring to mind a couple of things that the foundation has been doing. The foundation at this time has been investing our funds on a different ratio. 54% are in equity and 29% are in fixed income, and then there's a little bit in commodities and, and real estate REITs. The yield for the, right now was managed by another company. They're yielding a 7.6% from inception rate. The foundation adopted a 4.5% spend rate. In other words, 4.5% of the, of the funds that they have will be invested in student scholarships. What was proposed by PFM is a 3.3% investment rate. So the consideration is, and I want, want the trustees to be aware of this, that if we adopt this very, very conservative plan, two, two things happen. One, if, if we changed over right now from the 54% equity to a 40% equity, since the market's down 9%, we would lock in our 9% loss, number one. Number two, if we adopt a 3% spend rate, then we're losing 1.5% of $12 million that could be invested in student scholarships. That amounts to, we are, we have about $12 million in that account, and that would mean a loss of approximately $180,000 in, in funds that we could use for scholarships. So I just wanted the board to know that, that, that if we adopt this ultra-conservative, at least in light of what we're doing right now, investment policy, that we would be affecting student scholarships to a pretty good extent. So I liked some discussion on that. What, what is your feeling? I mean, is it, is this something that we want to go ahead and do? Do we want to take another look at it? The, the foundation has gone out for, they're going out for an RFQ, RFP, excuse me, on, for investment advisors, once we adopt this investment policy. If we adopt the investment policy as proposed, we could always take a look at it down the road. We could postpone this for till next month. We could do several different things. So what's, what's, what are your thoughts?
Mr. Chairman, this is Gwen Morrison. Do we have a revised recommendation from our staff in light of your comments?
No, this was, this is just new knowledge from yesterday.
Okay. In view of that, then I would recommend that we table it.
I agree.
Is that in form of a motion?
It is.
Okay, motion by Dr. Morrison. We table this consideration approval of revised mineral investment policy and a second by Dr. Patrick?
Right.
All in favor? Aye.
I, I would like to discuss the issue.
Go ahead.
I know this is gonna carry, but I am personally, I think we have done this enough. We have analyzed this. We have gone three years of finding the foundation on our policy, and it's time for us to make a decision. And each time there's new knowledge, there's gonna be a delay. And I think it's time to make a decision, and as a result, I'm going to vote against this motion to table.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. Is there a way we can make a decision that doesn't mean that we would lose money at the moment?
It's not a question of losing money. It's a policy for a long term. And we have been having these arguments about making 7%, 6%, so forth and so on, for odd infinitum. And, you know, we've, we've had PFM engage. We pay them a lot of money to make a recommendation.
Yeah, and, and we value PFM's recommendation for sure. Northern Trust has other, other views, and every expert out there has a different view. But right now, with the market being down 9%, if we had to...
Well, come on, come on. I, I am just, I am, I am just really tired of this, this continued conversation with the leadership of that board. And it's time for us to make a decision and move on. And I'm gonna vote against this motion to table it for that reason.
And that's your right.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
One opposed. Motion does not carry. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. The motion did carry.
Motion did carry. I'm sorry. You're exactly right. Okay, 5A, ratification and of payment to examity for remote proctoring fees for the Texas Success Initiative, TSI, assessment used for TCC student placement testing for an estimated cost of $450,000. Dr. Rock?
Good evening. Thank you. We, this request comes in response to COVID-19. The College Board released a web-based version of Accuplacer, the TSIA, for college placement testing. The exam offered online requires remote proctoring, and the proctoring fee is $20. The exam offered online requires remote proctoring, and the proctoring fee is twenty dollars per session. TCC will cover the fee of proctoring up to three sessions for new students and returning students. The estimated cost is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and we recommend your approval.
Questions, discussion?
I, this is Gwen Morrison. I move approval.
Second, Michael Evans.
Motion for approval by Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five, five B, consideration approval of a three-year master agreements with communication access, real-time translation for indefinite delivery, indefinite quantity, interpreting services for the college district in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars not to exceed.
So this master agreement will replace the current expiring agreement and will provide a pool of available vendors for the campus student accessibility resource offices to use as resources to meet the requirements of Americans with Disabilities Act and the Tarrant County College GA legal policy. And we recommend your approval.
Questions, discussion?
So moved.
Uh, motion to approve by Dr. Evans, second by.
Dr. Morrison.
Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item five C, consideration and approval of contract with Texas Refrigeration, Inc. for multiple air handling unit upgrades in a power plant building on a northeast campus in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Ms. Alanis.
Yes, this is just ongoing, uh, replacement of plant equipment that has reached the end of its useful life.
Move to approve. Michael Evans.
Second.
Motion approved by Dr. Evans, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item five D, consideration approval of contract with Freedom, Freedom Construction for renovation of non-destructive testing and inspection classroom and lab at the Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence in the amount of seven hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Ms. Alanis. Uh, you may recall that the college is adding a, a new associate of applied science degree program for non-destructive testing and non-destructive inspection, and these are the facility improvements that are required to make that happen.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Dr. Morrison, second by Dr. Patrick. All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item five E, consideration approval of contracts with multiple suppliers to purchase welding lab equipment for both Hermacy Johnson Hadley Northwest Center of Excellence and South Campus in the amount of nine hundred and ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and fourteen cents.
Uh, yes, back in twenty eighteen, uh, the college made the decision to expand their welding program, and, uh, the, the facilities have been, uh, being prepared for that, uh, that intent, and this completes the equipment acquisition for both campuses.
Move to approve. Michael Evans.
Motion to approve by Dr. Evans, second by.
Second by Teresa Yala.
Ms. Yala, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item five F, consideration approval with stunt construction for the district staff relocation project on a Trinity River Campus in the amount of twenty-three million, three hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and fourteen dollars. Ms. Alanis.
Yes, and I think staff is gonna pull up a slide, uh, deck for us to look at. Um, and a- as we discussed last week, and I think there were a few questions, back in twenty eighteen, the decision was made to consolidate administrative staff at the Trinity River Campus and to place the Mayowen Center up for sale. Uh, part of it was to improve efficiency of, of staff operations and also the end of the functional life of, of this building, um, made, made renovation of this building not, uh, not desirable. So, um, we've been, we've been working on the design of that, and, uh, let's see, next slide. So just to share with you, um, the, the construction area is big. It's a hundred and thirty-three thousand square feet. And you can see the construction costs per square foot that are anticipated there. Next slide.
Questions, discussion?
Um, to give you a sense of the, of the breakdown of cost, um, you can see that, uh, there's, there's portions of it related to the materials and the infrastructure associated with it, as well as, um, some contingency and insurance and bond, uh, bond, uh, bonding expenses noted at the bottom. Um, next slide. And you had requested to see, um, I believe, a typical floor plate, and as you, uh, you're aware, there's a number of, um, uh, floors that will be dedicated to office staff. It's intended to be flexible over time as our needs change and so on to, um, to facilitate vacancies of, of different teams and so on. And in addition, um, it's, it's, uh, intended to have a lot of collaboration space um, and, and workspace for teams to work together as well as focus space. And so this gives you a sense of what, uh, one of those floors might look like. Next slide. And then this floor is different than, uh, the others in that it's, it's reflective of, um, where the boardroom and the conference center will be. Um, the, uh, Center for Teaching and Learning will, will be moving as a result of this, and so we'll be filling out this space for, um, for meetings, um, including this body. Uh, next slide. And then these are preliminary. We're still working through selection of materials and, and that kind of thing, and it'll be an ongoing interior design discussion over the next several months, but we wanted to give you a few, um, preliminary images to see the, the quality and character of, of what's intended. And so, um, this gives you a, a sense of what the West Fork entrance would look like, along with where the board meetings would be held. And this gives you a different view of, of, um, the space where the board meetings would be held, and then back to the rear is where there would be, um, an opportunity for, uh, for closed session meetings and that kind of thing. And then this gives you a sense of the pre-function area that will exist out, outside of that. Next slide. But we'd be happy to answer any questions about this. Um, we, we sent this material in advance, so hopefully you've had a chance to look at it.
So this amounts to about a hundred and sixty-four dollars per square foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Questions, discussion?
Move approval.
Motion of approval, Dr. Morrison, second.
Bar.
Kenneth Bar. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item five G, consideration approval of contract with Air Balancing Company, Inc. for test and balance services on the district staff relocation project in amount of two hundred and thirty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes, and this is related to the previous item. It's a contract within the total budget, um, and scope of, of that exercise, and it's, um, to engage in, uh, to engage air balancing, um, the air balancing company, Inc. Um, in order to make sure that our HVAC systems work properly, uh, in the new configuration of space.
Questions, discussion?
Move approval.
Motion by Dr. Morrison.
Second.
Aye. By somebody.
Evans, second.
Evans. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item five H, consideration and approval of contract with multiple vendors for provisional classroom upgrades at multiple locations in the amount of two hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars and six cents.
Yes, and this is the ongoing series of classroom upgrades that we've been bringing to you as, as they've been ready to be let for construction.
To move.
Move for approval by Dr. Patrick, second.
Second, Teresa.
Second by Dr. Morrison, I think.
Yes.
All in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item I, consideration approval of five-year contract renewal with rave alert systems to send mass alerts for college emergency notifications in the amount of two hundred and eighty-two thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Uh, so the, the college is required by law to have, um, an emergency alert system like this, and they went through an exercise several years ago to select, uh, this vendor because it meets our needs. Entering into a five-year contract actually uh, saves us a significant sum, and so we recommend approval.
Move to approve. Michael Evans.
Move to approve by Dr. Evans, second by.
Kenneth Bar.
Second, Bar. Uh, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Motion carries. Item J, consideration and approval of contract with General Datatec LP, parentheses, GDT, parentheses, to purchase Cisco brand network electronics in the amount of seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and sixteen cents.
Yes, so this is just the ongoing, uh, maintenance of our, uh, network infrastructure that's necessary for all of the technology that we deploy.
Questions, discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved. This is Teresa.
Uh, motion approved by.
Second.
Ms. Yala. Second by Dr. Evans. All in favor? Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay. Um, item K, consideration approval of contract.
Care.
I'm sorry?
I'm s- I'm sorry you needed to announce that the motion care, Mr. President.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And thank you. Uh, item K, consideration approval of contract with International Consulting Acquisition Corporation, parentheses, DBA SG Public Sector, parentheses, for a current state assessment and enterprise software implementation service provider evaluation amount of eight hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and forty-six dollars not to exceed.
Yes, and I'm gonna ask Gina to pull up a cou- a couple of slides on this as well. As we talked about last week, um, the college is embarking on an effort to replace its core technology, uh, software that we use called Colleague that was selected, um, back in two thousand and two and is, uh, currently on a platform that is not, um, being updated and improved by the, the vendor at this point. In addition, there's a number of areas that it's, it's not meeting our needs. Um, as noted in the packet item, it's the, the core system that deals with student administration, as well as our human capital management, solve our HR and payroll activities, as well as our financial system. A very big endeavor with many, many stakeholders across the organization, and so this consulting engagement is intended to help us understand the current state of, um, our systems and the integrations with other products. Um, the areas that we need to improve our business processes and so on. In preparation for that, they will help us, uh, issue an RFP for, or two RFPs, one for the software product that we ultimately procure, as well as an implementer, uh, service for that as well. Um, this, this, um, uh, effort will be ongoing, probably five or six years before we, uh, complete implementation of all of the modules. You had asked for some additional information about how the, um, the, the fee was assessed, and we've assigned hours associated with each of these phases that, that are happening. So, um, it's, it's critical decision-making that we don't have internal bandwidth or expertise to implement, and um, what, what it will involve is developing thousands of requirements that will be necessary for whatever system we select. Um, we will en- enter into this with the philosophy that we will want a product that hopefully has minimum, if any, customizations that meets most of our needs and allows us to, um, consider appropriate places where we would, we would modify our business processes to adjust. So, uh, a, a significant, um, effort, uh, that, that we could use that assistance with. And next slide. Um, one of the things I want to point out is, you know, we've listed in the, in the board action item, the number of systems that are, that are necessary for this, but I've got this very complicated, um, diagram that shows our current colleague ERP and all the activities happening in it, but down each side of this exhibit shows you all of the different software products that are being used for different functionality across the college. And one of the, uh, the things that we will analyze with our partner in this is how many of these systems can be replaced by a newer ERP. Um, how many of them, um, uh, may need to remain, but we need to plan for integration services and how that will continue to work. Um, and so, um, my intent is just to, to describe the complexity of what we're undertaking, and, and, um, part of our effort is to just make sure that, um, as we, as we receive proposals for the software, uh, product, at the end of the day, we'll also have assistance in developing the contract to govern that project, um, manage our risks, um, and, and, uh, make sure that we have a successful project thereafter. So, uh, uh, it's, it's expensive, and, uh, I realize that, and, uh, but, but it's an important expansion of our capacity to make sure that we do this well. At the end of the day, I think that, um, doing this upfront work will allow us to progress more quickly through the overall implementation than we might otherwise, um, and, and save us hopefully some heartache and some, some time, um, uh, overall in terms of the quality of the work that gets implemented. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions, discussion?
Yes, this is Teresa. Mr. Chair, may I proceed?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, thank you so much for that presentation and for all of the extra effort and the detail that you provided to us to help, uh, explain the services that we were going to be purchasing through this consultant. Uh, I think that this exercise is warranted. Uh, you know, I think that was just something we've been talking about for an extended period of time. I know that there's a lot of complexities in our systems. I understand that, you know, the functionality has to be, you know, reliable. It has to be efficient, adaptable, secure, all of those things. And I know that staff has worked very hard to try to make sure that we have those types of systems. And I know it's important that we engage the appropriate subject matter experts. So that being said, I think that staff has, you know, provided quite a bit of information with supportive details about the engagement and the need for certain expertise. Um, I still believe that based on some of the information that, uh, questions that I've asked, I still feel that there might be some other options that we might explore that could be a little bit more cost-effective in line with, uh, with the route that we're trying to go, but those are just my initial comments.
And what is your?
So my, 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 my suggestion would be is that we consider maybe just giving this a little bit of time, uh, see if we can put, at least maybe postpone this, uh, do some more, um, searching, maybe following up with some of these other institutions that have engaged with this particular, uh, vendor, uh, just to get some, you know, just some feedback, maybe get some lessons learned. Uh, see what, see where we were comparable, see if there's some things that, that we could take that would help us develop a framework as we proceed forward. But my suggestion would be that we maybe do a little bit more, uh, a little bit more work on our end.
So, so one thing I, I will add is that I'm, I'm confident that staff's recommendation, um, will continue to be to proceed with a consultant as we move forward. Um, we, we, this particular firm has engaged with large Texas institutions, and, and it's as much about their knowledge of the products that are out there as their ability to help us study ourselves. And the, the, um, the uniqueness of the collection of products that we have and the business processes that we have in place. And so, um, we are, we are confident in the, in the recommendation. One of the things that trustee Iola and I have talked about is, is there an opportunity to save time or money by going, um, to the, uh, doing an RFI for the vendors to come tell you about, um, the, the products that they offer and their ability to meet our needs? And I, I think what we are seeking by sequencing it this way is to clearly articulate all of the requirements where when we have the opportunity to review the products that are available out there, we can get clarity around which set of requirements each one of them is able to meet, and it will be different. Each one of them will have their pros and cons, and they will do better than others. So, um, I say all that to say that, that, um, you know, we'll, we'll follow the direction of the board, but I, I think we are confident in our recommendation about the order in which we would proceed, and it, that would be most time and cost efficient over the long run.
Any further questions, discussion?
Well, to that point, I, I do, I, I do understand staff's, um, eagerness to proceed. Um, I do know also that the options available, uh, as far as this type of platform. I do know also that the options available as far as this type of platform, whether it be cloud-based or not, is very limited. So I don't, I don't think it would hurt us to wait at least a little bit of time, circle back with these folks, find out what it is that the service that they received at these higher institutions and just, just so we can get a better, a better idea before we move forward. I know that there's some colleges locally that we could reach out to, Austin Community College, Lone Star is another one, I think another one is, let's see, Collin County, there's some others that I just think it would not hurt us to do just a little bit of due diligence and find out what that experience has been like and whether they would recommend it. Because a year's time is quite a bit. I don't think in my experience, in my 20-plus years' experience in IT, generally valuations do not take a year, even though it does include implementation. But again, it's just my, it's just my thoughts and that's just what I'm prepared.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask?
Mr. Bar speaks up.
Ms. Allenice, would, what would the impact be of delaying a decision for a month?
So we certainly could delay a decision for a month. I will, I will tell you that our big concerns is just the risk associated with continuing to operate in the environment with as many systems cobbled together as well as our, well, let me put it this way, a lot of the work that's coming out of the principal work has student-facing functionality that until we address the fundamental foundational system, which is the ERP, we're going to have a hard time moving any of those desires forward. A month is not a problem. I will, we can certainly talk to some of the other institutions. ISG has worked extensively with those institutions and continues to be awarded, awarded those engagements. And so their expertise would help us understand the differences in environments of each of us and help us navigate that. And so I just offer that I suspect that we will, we will make the same recommendation next month.
Thank you.
One of the things, if I may, Mr. Chair, that I had proposed as a consideration is that with this RFI that, and we talked quite extensively on it, but I think it might behoove us to just explore that and at the same time, be able to have those conversations with those folks just to get the feedback. I just would like to have a better feel when you're going to spend this amount of money on a consultant, that typically the work that could be done in probably less than a year's time, I just, I just want to make sure we've, we've done our due diligence. It sounds like we've done a really good job, staff has provided a lot of information, but I think that based on some of the questions that I've asked, I think I'd like to have just a little bit more information. Thank you.
Ms. Ayala, I want to be clear, I'm understanding your request. The other institutions that have engaged this firm, you would like, for the lack of a better phrase, to do some reference checking background with those. That's different than an RFI. So I want to be sure.
No, I would like to at least do the initial conversations with them and I still would like for us to explore the RFI as we talked about, there's opportunities there where you could just, hey, say this is what we'd like to do, this is kind of, here's where we are, say, you know, phase zero, this is where we'd like to be, what do we need to do to get to that point and just kind of get some thoughts out there and see, see if we're even on the right track. And if this was, if this is their recommendation that we go and follow this, then that'd be it, but I don't know if we've quite done that yet.
Well, the RFI would be with the firms that would actually provide the software itself. So this is, this would be a different engagement. There are, there are three to five or so of those that are most popular. To do any type of investigation or query to each of those related to what our needs are will take a significant amount of time. And I'm not sure what it will yield us as it relates to this contract that we're talking about. That would be a completely different process and that would be going directly to the software companies and saying, what can you do for us? And that's not the process we're proposing to do. If we go in that direction, we're talking about a significant amount of time and then we would be missing that insurance policy that we're looking at as it relates to using, you know, CIG here. Or I.
Well, the other thing.
Sorry, go ahead.
What I'd like to do is just, just make a motion that we, we hold on for at least, do a little bit more due diligence. I would like to explore the RFI still. We can talk about that if you'd like and then also pursue some feedback from these folks.
Sure, and I.
Go ahead.
I'll offer one bit of context. So last fall, when I was getting familiar with the systems here and some of the challenges we were facing, I actually did have informal conversations with one of the big vendors in this area and it was very informative and helpful to understand that, that it was appropriate for us to be thinking about which systems could be eliminated as a result of going through this exercise and so on. However, one of the things that became really apparent to me is that we needed an orderly way in which to document that what we truly needed to operate, how each of the major vendors match up to that, which you, which we need ISG's help to organize that conversation. And so the intent is to have a very orderly way for us to evaluate that and staff make an informed decision about the, about the product that's selected. So, which is why we brought this recommendation to you. But certainly, I mean, we'll, we'll follow what the, what the board needs and try to ask or answer any questions that you feel like we still need to.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second Ms. Ayala's motion.
Ms. Ayala, would you go with that motion again?
Yes, I'd just like to make, I'd like to make a motion that we table this for at least a month and explore the RFI and do some further due diligence in communicating with colleges.
We have a motion by Ms. Ayala, second by Mr. Bar. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries. Thank you. Item I, consideration and approval of order authorizing issuance of general obligation bonds, Series 2020 in an amount not to exceed $300 million. And this order includes delegation authority, safe parameters, and related instruments and procedures.
Yes, and so as discussed last week, we've been going through the work to do our first debt issue associated with the election that we held last fall. And the only thing that you will see that's different from the document that you were provided, well, actually, there's two things that you'll see that are different from the document you were provided last week. This one reflects that we will have fees associated with the rating agencies that you are authorizing us to engage in. In addition, we have attached the offering or the official statement draft for your approval, that it is, whatever we publish will be substantial in conformance with the document that you've been provided today, that this will allow us to move forward. And I will note that we had our meetings, our formal meetings with the rating agencies this week and they went very well. And so we're looking forward to answering a few questions that they had and then coming back to you with, with positive ratings.
I've got a question for Ms. Allenice. Ms. Allenice, Michael Evans, thank you for that information. About how long does it usually take a rating agency to respond back to us with a grade, so to speak, is what I call?
Sure, right now, we are targeting that it would go to committee with them on June the first and we would know pretty quickly thereafter. It's contingent really upon us getting any final questions answered to them to ensure that we get the most, most credit we possibly can in terms of that conversation. So, but I would expect by the end of the first week in June, we should know.
Thank you, ma'am.
When we approve the official statement, are we approving the distribution of it or the content thereof? Because of course I have not read the official statement and I, I don't know, what am I approving?
You're, so the official statement is what will go out to the potential investors that, for the board, that provides a lot of factual information about our organization and including our current financial situation, students that attend and that kind of thing and the surrounding economy. What we have provided, you are approving essentially the content of that, that it will substantially conform to that. The only change I intend, and there's some blanks to fill in that we just don't know the answers to yet, that as we progress towards, towards the sale, that they'll get filled in. In addition, we intend to add a section associated with the COVID response that a number of investors have indicated that they would, would like to see. So we will be adding that information as well. But it's substantially factual information garnered from our CAFR, which you see every year as well, and so shouldn't be any surprises in it.
Will our audited financial statements be attached to it? I haven't, I haven't seen it, I haven't looked at it.
I don't know that they're attached so much as that investors will know that they're available and all of that is.
They're available. And I assume that we've got disclosure council, bond counsel that has looked at this and that we rely upon his advice that it's materially correct. Is that correct?
That is correct. Jeff Lechell is our bond counsel and he and his colleague Clark have participated substantially in preparing this and our financial advisors have reviewed it as well.
And he recommends that we, that we approve this?
Indeed, yes.
And we can rely on that, on that advice?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. Any further discussion, questions?
Mr. Hyde.
Yes, I just have a quick clarification, quick question. Since on here that the debt shall be issued for a maximum of 20, maturity of 20 years, what is that date? What is it based on? What is the start date for that, Ms. Allenice?
It depends on when we sell. We're looking at June, but in the event that there's some market conditions that cause us to bump our date a little bit, you know, it may push out just in response to that, but it's, the bonds will be, have a duration of 20 years based on the sale date.
Based on the sale, okay, thank you.
Or the closing.
Market conditions, what do you anticipate in June and in terms of interest rates and how will that change what we, the issue date? What are the important considerations?
Yeah, so right, right now, the market has stabilized in a way that we anticipate getting favorable rates like other colleges have recently done sales and so our financial advisors will keep an eye on that. What they will also do is monitor daily, weekly news that may have an impact that we decide, we don't want to sell today, we want to wait a week because whatever happened. It's just a little bit of flexibility in there in case there's something that causes a blip in the market that they would pay attention to. And can I offer one clarification? I think it was trustee Ayala, it's actually the close date, not the sale date, that I should say that the 20-year term.
Okay, thank you. I just, thank you for clarifying that, okay.
Any further questions, discussion?
I make a motion to approve.
I second, Michael Evans.
Motion to approve by Mr. Greenhill, second by Dr. Evans. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'd like to, I'd like to, to number one, thank, thank the chancellor and the staff and the faculty and everybody that's carrying through under this, these very uncertain conditions that we exist in today and, and we've made all these modifications and yet the college seems to be chugging along just as efficiently as it, as it has in the past with the adaptations. And also, as Dr. Morrison has pointed out, we really have to give a lot of credit to our students who have had to make, make an incredible adjustment to stay in school and to keep doing the things that they do to achieve their dreams. They all have hurdles that they have to, have to cross and this is just one more big one that they've had to fight. So kudos to them and they need all our, our help and advice and, and thank you and everything for staying the course. So Dr. Giavonini, chancellor's report.
So before you get to that, may I interrupt and suggest we cover the financial report?
Oh, of course you may. I skipped right over that monthly financial report by Ms. Allenice. You were on so long the last time, I thought you'd covered that. Just go ahead, just.
It probably feels like I've been talking a lot. So yes, and so this just very briefly shares with you that our income to date is at 91.2% which is appropriate for this time of year. And the good news is, is that means that we've received the lion's share and so we don't anticipate any big negativity around that associated with the current economic situation and our total expenses are on target with the time of year that we're at. If we can move to the next page. And the investment recap. Again, so we, our yield at the end of April was at 1.37% and we're just over a year of weighted, and weighted maturity. So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I will tell you that you may have seen in the news projection or instructions from the state that we've officially received now about a 5% reduction for next year. The good news is that our finances continue to be in very, very good shape, which is a credit to the board and then also was reflected in our discussions with the rating agencies and then you see it here in terms of our ability to weather, weather the challenges that are going on right now.
I'd like to make a comment, Mr. Chairman. I understood that maybe the chancellor has information on this, that, that one of the, the chair of, one of the colleges indicated that the, it's not recommended that community colleges be a part of the 5% cut. I don't, that may or may not be true. It was just something that I heard from Carol Scott and Elmore College. So maybe the chancellor knows more information.
Community colleges are not exempt from the 5%.
Oh, wow.
Wow, okay.
Part of the 5% cut.
Okay, I was misinformed.
Thank you, Mr. Greenhill. I had hoped that you were correct.
I hoped I was too.
Is, is there any activity statewide to maybe counteract that through CAT?
Oh yeah, there's a, and TAC and the, and the teachers organization that I've said before are working very hard. This was anticipated, the 5% cut, but we're working very hard on other measures for smaller colleges, increasing the core from, I think to a couple of million dollars more for the smaller colleges, but really sending the message that, and plus other strategies to help us from getting hit too hard, not losing money, but not, maybe not gaining any, but kind of staying flat. But the, but the message is going to be, and this is the message we're sending now to all our representative, is that we are the, we're the, we're the solution. We're the solution to the issue of the recovery of the economy. I mean, we've got to get people back to work, you've got to train them, you've got to educate them. We don't know whether or not contact hours are going to go down or up, you know, there's different analysis of that. But the TACC and the CATT and the, we're all working very hard to, to come up with a joint, come up with a joint strategy with the legislators. And as you know, we, the TACC people have, have talked to Gio Caprileoni and others, to Jane Nelson. We're in contact and I'm optimistic that we're going to be able to come out of this thing pretty well.
Okay, chancellor and Ms. Allenice, do we have any projections as to our, what our fall enrollment is going to look like? I know it was down initially, but typically when the economy goes down, our enrollment goes up. Have we seen any of that? when the economy goes down, our enrollment goes up. Have we seen any of that evidenced at this point?
So the summer enrollment is, is pretty, uh, even. Uh, we were up significantly in the May semester, um, nearing equal, um, coming, uh, the summer one and summer two. The fall is much more of an unknown, um, for, for a number of reasons, obviously, for what has happened, but what, 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 how that has impacted individual behavior. Uh, first of all, um, our students were not here in the spring to register for the fall, although we made many, many efforts and continue to do so to, uh, encourage them to register for the fall. We also go through a, a calendar process of assessing and enrolling recent high school graduates. That process had to be taken online and therefore was backed up. And we're only, uh, a couple of weeks into that. Uh, so that has impacted it as, as well. Uh, yes, it's generally true. Um, conventional thinking would say the economy is not good, uh, people go back to college. Uh, these are unprecedented times though, with 38 million people unemployed, with unemployment rate, real unemployment rate that'll be in the mid 25, perhaps 30%. That's uncharted water. And, uh, will people have money to go back to school? I do think, uh, you know, as this plays out over time, I think the community college sector is going to have plenty of opportunity, uh, to serve more of what it currently does and additional, um, programs and services will come to light as it relates to getting people back to work. Uh, one significant, um, item in all of this is the jobs and how will they come back? And in fact, there are a number that, that are, would predict, um, 12 to 15 million jobs that will be permanently missed from the economy, meaning new, new types of positions will have to be created. And that is something this country has never had to endure, uh, that in fact, to create 12 million new jobs. And I think there'll be, certainly be a role for the community college to play. Now, that's not all going to impact fall. This is going to be over a number of years. We also have the dynamic of other students from other colleges, other universities. They may choose to stay close to home, uh, and may choose perhaps, uh, their first two years here, or perhaps they wouldn't pass and then transfer. So there's a lot of dynamics that are moving. Um, and I think as time goes on, it'll continue, uh, the landscape will continue to change so much. Um, I'm on calls daily, um, and talking with folks statewide and nationally. There is no crystal ball. Everyone is asking the same question. Well, what will fall look like? Um, and, and nobody really knows. But understanding what those dynamics are and how they may play out and the opportunity it may bring for the college, community colleges in particular, to serve, um, is, is, is discussed greatly. And there are a number of things coming to the table that, that, uh, in the past, we probably may not have, uh, have thought of or have put much, as much emphasis on or see as much demand in.
Are, are we, uh, doing any special promotional activities in this regard on social media or whatever to spread the word at this point in time? The advantages of going to uni-college, et cetera?
Sure. There's a few initiatives undertaken. I'm going to talk about a few in a second that are littered throughout social media now, particularly in LinkedIn and some of the professional social media. Uh, the college has, in the last few weeks, produced, um, uh, clips, if you will, 30-second clips that speak to the college, the branding of the college, the, uh, in, in different segments, four or five segments that will, uh, hit the social media airway shortly, as well as other airway. And they'll speak about the colleges as it relates to, uh, its affordability, uh, its accessibility, not incurring a great deal of debt in doing so, essential, uh, skills, essential jobs, uh, what companies are looking for today, um, short-term skill training for individuals, um, the fact that our online campus is successful it is and how, how well we navigate the online environment, as well as speaking to the transfer student to enforce, uh, the value that, in the, in the, uh, flexibility and the convenience we have to, 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 um, navigate the first two years of college. So yes, there, there, those items have been produced within the last couple of weeks and they should hit the airways very shortly.
Outstanding. Any report, Chancellor?
Yes, I, thank you. I have, uh, uh, the pleasure of sharing with you a number of significant accolades. And, um, so if you will, um, endure this form with me. Uh, TCC was ranked among the top 50 community colleges in the nation for 2020. Um, there are nearly 1,100 community colleges in the country, and that ranking is based upon cost, reputation, and success. As I had mentioned, the TCC Connect, our online campus ranked number one, the best online community college campus in the entire nation for 2020. And that was a competition among 280 institutions. Ranking was based on program strength, online readiness, the return on investment, cost, student engagement, flexibility, reputation, and faculty. The TCC Automotive Technology Program was ranked number nine in the country as being the best, uh, associate degree program in automotive technology, and that is based upon tuition, median salaries of the graduates, median debt as those who graduate, and this is all reported by the United States Department of Education. The Collegian, our college newspaper, won first place in the non-daily division of the University Association, Associated Press. Significant that this is the second year in a row we have won that and the fourth time in the last seven years. Four TCC early college high schools were named among the 2020 best high schools in the nation. And that was compiled by U S News and World Report and numerically ranked 18,000 schools nationwide. Specifically, our four schools were the Texas Academy of Biomedical Sciences, TABs at the Trudy River Campus, the Collegiate Academy at the Northeast Campus, Marine Creek Collegiate High School at the Northwest Campus, and the Everman Academy High School at the South Campus. And lastly, and really most importantly, although we did not hit, uh, have a graduation ceremony, we have conferred degrees on 8,620 graduates of certificates and degrees, the most ever the college has ever graduated. That's over 400 more in the last year. So we are obtaining students and our students are, um, are, uh, being successful at a higher rate. And that's a great, uh, certainly a testament to them, their families, as well as certainly our faculty and staff. So thank you, uh, Mr. Heed.
Fantastic. How many early college high school graduates did we have this year?
I'm not sure offhand. We had 400 last year. So my guess would be at least that much. Uh, I don't have the exact number.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. There will not be a closed session this evening. Uh, our next work session meeting will be on June 11th, 2020, and our next board meeting will be on June 18th, 2020. And now we, uh, would consider adjournment if someone would make the motion?
So moved.
So moved.
Teresa?
Uh, motion by Ms. Ayala, second by Dr. Morrison. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 Nay. Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.